Good evening, everybody. For the record, it's Thursday, October 14th, 2021, 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. As always, I've called the meeting to order. We start with a pledge to our flag. So I know Councilmember Hornby's done this a lot. So Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. And for the record tonight, we have one, two, three, four, five council members present. Councilmember Huffaker, are you on the phone with us tonight?
I am here.
All right. And Councilmember Bailey is on vacation today. So our first item on our agenda tonight are the consent items, which includes approval of this evening's agenda, the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings, and declaring some personal property surplus to the needs of the city, and a motion to accept the work performed by Rudnick and Sons on our First Street Bike Way program. So may I entertain a motion if we had one?
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. Also, a motion to approve Revolution-- uh, resolution, sorry, number 2021-33, declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee, and authorizing the Department of Information Systems to dispose of the personal property identified herein. Motion for the City Council to accept the work performed by contractor Rudnick and Sons LLC on a city project number 1914, First Street Bike Way Safety Improvement, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve this evening's agenda, the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings, to adopt Resolution 2021-33, declaring certain personal property surplus to the needs of the city of Wenatchee, and authorizing the Department of Information Systems to dispose of the personal property identified therein, and also to accept the work performed by the subcontractor-- excuse me, by the contractor Rudnick and Sons LLC on city project 1914, the First Street Bike Way Safety Improvement Project, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda, citizen comment. This would be a time any member of the audience wish to address the city council on anything. Please come on up and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Miller, 1801 Aspen Place, Wenatchee, also with the Town Toyota Center, and just wanted to-- I won't regurgitate the letter, but I sent a letter a while back dealing with the ARPA funds and the Town Toyota Center. I just want to say thank you very much for thinking of the arena that, obviously, of getting reopened and getting back to the six and a half, eight million dollars of economic impact that the arena has done in the past 12 years is very important. Last year, Linda, we were probably $1.68 in economic impact. So, and if you remember, that letter is, "The arena did file for everything we possibly could for assistance." The shuttered venue program was the last one. Our lobbyists assured us that museums and movie theaters were first in line, arenas were third, there wasn't going to be enough money. They were wrong. So, and but don't worry, the lobbyists got paid just, just fine. So with that, with the shuttered venues, we did get those dollars, and we anticipated spending about $400,000 to get open. We'd been down for 18 months. The staff that we did keep was on a 30% pay cut. So we did get all that back up. Of course, we did a deep cleaning. We had equipment. We had obviously unforeseen, well, foreseen chiller issues and water issues, which can imagine being shuttered for 18 months. So we did do that. We did spend those dollars. And of course, then we had a sold-out group of fermite show and followed by sticks the same week to get open. So with that, the $131,000 that has been appropriated and is in my bank account at the arena is going to be returned. The staff recommendation and the PFD board approved it in the last meeting. And where's Brad?
He's here somewhere.
So Brad, I, yeah, so I think I'm now being told that's in the minutes, but now the minutes need to be approved.
Okay.
So it's going to be a couple more weeks, Brad. But I wanted to thank you very much for, obviously, keeping the county besides the Town Toyota Center back and flourishing is very important. So please, so thank you for the, for the dollars. Not going to say they won't be needed in the future, but just in closing, 11 and a half years ago, when I was lucky enough to, to get this position, I sat in front of Rufus Woods on my first day, and things were a little rocky in the press, if you remember back then. And I said, "The one thing you will always hear from me is not going to tell you I can make this work, but you're going to get integrity and you're going to get the truth." And we have done that. And so those dollars that we applied for with ARPA was based on us getting nothing else. So if those dollars do need to come into handy, trust me, I will ask for them, but they will be on a purpose, which you will see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Anybody else wish to, just to counsel on something on tonight's agenda or something different? Seeing no takers, we do have one presentation tonight regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. Councilmember Kulas, do you have that?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. Whereas the city of Wenatchee recognizes that the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as the Americas have occupied these lands since time immemorial, and whereas the city recognizes the fact that Wenatchee is built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region, without whom the building of the city would not have been possible, and whereas the city values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the deep cultural contribution that has substantially shaped the character of the city of Wenatchee, and whereas the city of Wenatchee has a responsibility to oppose systemic racism towards indigenous peoples in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social stability, and whereas the city promotes the closing of the equity gap for indigenous peoples through the policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensuring greater access and opportunity, and honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on Rights of Indigenous Peoples on December 16th, 2010, and that declaration recognizes that indigenous peoples have suffered from historic injustices as a result of, among other things, their colonization and dispossession of their lands, territories, and resources. And whereas Article 15 of the Declaration recognizes the right of indigenous peoples to the dignity and diversity of their cultures, traditions, histories, and aspirations, which shall be appropriately reflected in education and public information, and places an obligation on states to take effective measures in consultation and cooperation with the indigenous peoples concerned to combat prejudice and eliminate discrimination, and to promote tolerance, understanding, and good relations among indigenous peoples and all other segments of society. Now, therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim that the second Monday in October shall be recognized as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I call upon public officials, educators, businesses, communities, volunteers, and all people of Wenatchee, Washington, to observe this day to honor and celebrate the thriving cultures and positive values of the indigenous peoples of our region. And witness whereof I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 14th day of October, 2021. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kulas. And I see we have a few of our friends here.
Thank you for that, Mark. I appreciate those words. And also, so my name's Mary Big Bull Lewis. I am the chair of a new indigenous-led nonprofit called Indigenous Roots and Reparation Foundation. We're newly formed. We are a little late getting the request out to city councils, and this is my treasurer, Paige Reyes. And so I just want to say, lamb, lamb, thank you for taking the steps to do this. And although it is after October 11th, every day we can celebrate indigenous peoples because we're still here, and we have a lot of work to do for reparations, and we look forward to working with the city and any other organization that would like to take those positive steps towards reparation.
Off a day, my name is Paige Castro Reyes, and I am indigenous to the islands of Guam known as Guam. My family came here from our homelands in 1969, and I am just really honored to be here with my dear friend Mary on her homelands and look forward to the continued work that the city has proclaimed and continues to be dedicated to.
Thank you, ladies. We're going to keep working. Oh, thanks, sir. Hold on. All right, we have a number of action items this evening, and so we will start with the first item regarding accepting some lodging tax funds from our friends at Shilene County for Lincoln Park. Mr. Erickson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. So in an effort to try to get the Lincoln Park renovation project completely funded, we applied for a grant through the county for some lodging tax funds, and that grant was successful. So this evening, we're requesting a motion to accept the grant and authorize the mayor to sign the grant agreement. The grant is for $100,000.
And just a quick update on where we're at with the Lincoln Park project?
Lincoln Park project, play equipment has been ordered, and the rest of the project is scheduled to go out to bid a week from Sunday, with the bid opening right before the end of the year, mid-December.
And the reason for the length of time, it seems like a long window there.
Yeah, it is a little bit longer window than normal, but we have a number of different specialized subcontractors on this project. Everything from splash pad to the pump part to fencing and soccer field and earthwork and things like that. So there's a lot of moving parts to that project that makes it a little bit more complex and a little bit more specialized to get those subcontractors on board.
Right. Any questions for David? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to accept the Shilene County Lodging Tax Fund grant in the amount of $100,000 for the Lincoln Park project and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Cuevas for the, to accept the Shilene County Lodging Tax Fund grant in the amount of $100,000 for the Lincoln Park project and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And appointments to the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. Mr. Erickson.
Yes, well, I have two, actually, two separate resolutions here, two separate motions to reappoint two members to the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. We have Resolution 2021-32, which would reappoint Ryan Harmon to the commission for his second term, and then Resolution 2021-34 would reappoint Lucas Headkey to the commission as well for his second term. And staff in the commission recommend approval. I think in your packet, they have their applications and all that stuff.
Right. Any questions for David? I think we can just do this with one, one motion to accept both, both resolutions if you want to. So I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve Resolution Number 2021-32, reappointing Ryan Harmon to Position Eight of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission, and to approve Resolution Number 2021-32, reappointing Lucas Head, Headkey?
Yep.
To Position Six of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution 2021-32, reappointing Ryan Harmon to Position Eight of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission, and to approve Resolution 2021-34, reappointing Lucas Headkey to Position Six of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor--
I just have a quick question for David. Are we, is the commission completely full now, or are you short people?
We still have a vacancy on the commission. Yep, that one just came up last week. Marlon Peterson has decided to--
Are you having trouble finding people to join in?
Uh, not yet. Yeah, this, this last vacancy that, that came up, Commissioner Peterson has decided to take his family and move into a tiny home and travel the west coast. So we just found out about that last week. So we'll get word out to try to fill those, that vacancy.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for David? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. All right. Next up is change order number three for our little project downstairs. So Alyssa, how are you today?
Well, I'm doing okay.
Good.
Good. Good evening, Council, Mayor. Alyssa Schaefer, Public Works Department, Facilities Manager for the Public Works Department. As you can see, the City Hall redevelopment project is continuing to move forward. Driving around the block, you may have noticed some extensive site work, new parking areas and curb extensions. Those should be wrapped up mid-next week. So we should have open streets again, which will be great. Earlier today, down in the lobby, you could look in and see structural steel being installed and the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens in the floor being complete. Outside these windows over here, there's four skylights that are roughed in, and if you happen to take the main stairway, you can see a new wall being constructed. So it's very interactive. As you can imagine, in a building with this age and this history, there are a few unforeseen conditions that have caused some additional expense. During the past four months, we have created a few of those changes. The specifics of the change order are outlined in tonight's council agenda and the amount of $134,438 plus tax. It is our recommendation that the city council approve the contract change order with TW Clark LLC and authorize the mayor's signature. Are there any questions?
So remind the council, the total amount you had set aside for contingencies was?
A million dollars.
Okay. And so far, you think that we are doing okay with our contingency based on the change order so far?
I do.
And how much of this is just because this was a federal building that was built with no permits because they're not required to have a permit and stuff we just didn't foresee?
About 70% of it is from an old building, unforeseen conditions, or an as, an un-as-built building, or accurately as-built building. Some of it occurred from the site work that we uncovered outside, which we didn't know was going to happen. And, yeah. The rest is things that have come up that we may have overlooked during the design phase.
I, I think we all spotted the street lighting conduit that was laid bare in storage out here.
Oh, good.
Yeah, what a mess.
Yes.
I noted the unstable soils.
Yes.
But that's not a structural, was that a road structural issue?
So there are two unstable soils areas. One is outside and near the art mounds. The irrigation system for the art mounds has to be advanced. It has to run longer, and it caused for some runoff to pool underneath the sidewalk. We pulled up the sidewalk and the soil was like jello.
Yeah.
Had to take that out. But then there were some unstable soils down in the basement, unforeseen, backfilled with whatever material they had on site, not ideal material. We had to import backfill for the basement.
Was that for the support wall when you got all the way down?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a concrete wall that goes all the way from the basement, all the way up, and then up, and you can see it in the back, and it's got more to go, but--
Correct.
That, had to get all the way down to the footings, and when he dug the footings, you found some--
Some cobbling material.
Yeah.
Looked like river rock and some dirt.
Yeah.
Not compatible.
Yeah. Like maybe they just knocked down the houses that were there and built right over the top of them?
Which we've seen before.
Okay.
In the back.
Yeah.
Well, let's see, this was Stevens School.
Yeah.
And then the gas station was on the corner. Tom Green and his brother had, ran the bus company out of here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but it sounds like overall, you're saying that the change orders so far are well within what we anticipated, and you thought most of them would have been occurring by now anyhow, based on demolition and what you would have found, so.
Correct.
Yeah. It was amazing to watch them, for two weeks, jackhammer out a roof. Literally, jackhammering out the roof, because it's, there was two levels of the roof paving, and then they got underneath that, and then there was concrete. I mean, it was, I've never, it was pretty impressive to watch. This building's built pretty good.
Pretty stout.
Yeah.
Got good bones.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Alyssa? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to approve the contract change order with TW Clark Construction LLC and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve the contract changes with TW Clark Construction, as outlined in today's packet, and authorize the mayor to sign the change orders. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posed? Motion carries. Thanks, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on that. I know it's a big project, and you're here every day, or twice a day.
Working the process.
Yeah. All right. So we finally have our little real estate contract with DOT to purchase a little piece of right-of-way over by the George Selmer Bridge, and then turn around and sell it to the adjacent property owner, Mr. Noyes, for potential redevelopment. So Laura?
Yes, thank you.
I'll let you present.
Laura Mayall, Executive Services Director. So as the mayor mentioned, this is something that staff has been working on for quite some time. It's a kind of redevelopment option on the corner of South Mission and Stevens Street. The city had owned that property in the past, but it was reverted back to the state, Washington State Department of Transportation due to the restriction and the deed that reverted the land back to them if it was not used for park purposes. So in that, in that kind of shuffle, there was discussions about working with the adjacent property owner, who owns several of the parcels there and is interested in redeveloping that area. And so there are two transactions here. That's why there's two purchase and sale agreements. The first transaction will be between the Washdot and the city of Wenatchee. So Washdot will sell that property to the city of Wenatchee. And then there's a second transaction, or a second contract, between Washdot and Mr. Gary Noyes. Those, those transactions will close simultaneously, so it will be just kind of a all-in-one escrow. Mr. Noyes is responsible for all of the fees, including the sales price, which is appraised In addition to that, once the property transaction closes, there is an alleyway that will need to be vacated in order to go ahead and provide all of that area to Mr. Noyes. He will now own, if these are approved, he will own both sides of the property. And so from a process standpoint, that's usually what happens with alley vacations, that goes to the adjacent property owners. Anything else?
No, just, I mean, we've had, we've had this to the Public Works Committee a couple times, updating you, so many of you have seen this over the years. So we finally got it to the finish line, we think.
Yeah, and this is one that I think if Mr. Noyes wants to redevelop that property, he needs additional land for parking and other development options. And I, I know, talking to him, and I know Mark will be interested, I know he's trying to acquire, I'd say, other properties in the area. So hopefully that welcome-to-Wenatchee area there gets a, gets a fresh look. And again, the city's responsibility here is just to be the middleman. We do this on occasion, where it's in the public interest, we get in the middle of a deal, because right now Washdot could only sell it to us, and so we're just sort of the middlemen to get it where it gets to go to the adjacent landowner, so. Felt like the right thing for us to do, and I know we've talked about it off and on for two or three years. So I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to, one, approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement between Washington State Department of Transportation, Washdot, and the city of Wenatchee, and authorize the mayor, mayor's signature, and, two, approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Gary Noyes, and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Sparza, to approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the Washington State Department of Transportation, Washdot, and the city of Wenatchee, and authorize the mayor's signature, and, two, to approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Gary Noyes, and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those, all those in favor say aye.
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 Posed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. As Laura mentioned today, she's been working on it since the day she got here, which is almost two years.
That's my career.
And I know that Steve King's been working on it for a year or so before that, so thanks for keeping going with this, and I know we've been talking about it for a while. All right. School Resource Officer, Chief Crown.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Steve Crown, chief of police for the city of Wenatchee. Item before you is interlocal agreement between the city of Wenatchee and the Wenatchee School District for two school resource officers. The agreement is substantially the same as previous years. The one main difference is there is additional language regarding the recent legislative session that specifically talks to some training issues. In this agreement, the school district agrees to pay half of the two officers' salary. That dollar value is around $151,335,000. The city covers all the other costs that are associated with officer certifications, such as firearms training, defensive tactics, and, and things like that. However, the school district agreed to pay half of the training requirements associated with them being certified as school resource officers. So we're excited to continue our agreement with the-- So we're excited to continue our agreement with the Wenatchee School District. We do have a new school resource officer. One of our previous school resource officers resigned and is going back to Nebraska. So that's a little bit of a change, but our new officer is Corey Fuller, and he's fitting nicely into his new role. So I'll take any questions.
To your question, I didn't realize this until you mentioned it, that specific training for school resource officers. So can you walk me through a little bit about what that sort of entails?
Yeah, there's an organization that's called the National School Resource Officers that provides the additional training that's wrapped up into school resource officers. It talks a lot to emotional intelligence for school resource officers and how they're going to be dealing with, with kids, as well as the legal ramifications for dealing with crimes in the school district, as well as interactions with juveniles. There are additional training components for new officers that come on board, which is also wrapped up in policy that is provided by the school district. So in addition to the state laws that are, our officers are responsible for following, there are additional school policies and rules that our officers have to be trained on and be ready to properly apply those.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any, any questions for Chief Crown while we have him here? I'm very excited that we renewed this contract with the, with the school district and excited to continue this partnership with them. All right, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to approve the agreement with the Wenatchee School District and authorize the mayor's signature.
Okay. Motion by council member Harold, second by council member Cuevas, to adopt the agreement with the Wenatchee School District regarding school resource officers and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Invalid selection.
Sorry, Chief.
I mean, it's perfect.
I guess that was an aye. All those against? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Keith, he still with us?
I think we lost Keith.
I'm still here.
All right, thank you.
That was funny.
All right, so Mr. Posenjack, we've got two items with you this evening, one being updated to some of our fund accounting, and second regarding preliminary budget. So.
Yeah.
Let's get the really exciting one first. Tell us about the funds we have.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm presenting, first, I'm presenting ordinance 2021-27 to update the city's list of accounting funds. For financial reporting standards, it's very beneficial to have a list of all the city's funds presented in the city code. And as time goes on, sometimes funds become obsolete, and sometimes we need new funds. So this year, looking at 2022, 2022's budget, we need to update and remove a couple obsolete funds. The, there's an old LID, and then an old solid waste fund, that neither of these are no longer necessary. But we also need to add a couple funds. The ARP recovery fund is going to track, we're getting $6 million of ARP funds, and we need to be able to keep them separate and track them separately, so that's what that is for. It'll track the spend down. And then the infra grant, with the 90-some million dollar infra grant, plus all another hundred-some million of state funding that we'll need, we want to keep that separate from all of our other funds, just so that we can track it a little bit easier and not co-mingle them, co-mingle them. With that, any questions?
No questions for me. Finance committee saw this earlier today and didn't have any questions, so I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2021-27, amending and restating section 1.20.010 of the Wenatchee city code funds defined purpose.
Second. Motion by council member Esparza, second by council member Bailey, or maybe Hornby, I think, was it you?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, transfer Hornby, yeah. To adopt ordinance 2021-27, amending and restating section 1.20.010 of the Wenatchee city code regarding funds defined and purposes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Brad, preliminary budget.
Yeah.
What part of, what a part of the process is this? Is this number two? Number three? How many times do we see this?
This is actually, this, I believe, is the first time.
First time.
First time of three.
The whole budget's been seen by the council, okay.
Yep. I believe this is the first time the whole budget's been seen by the council. We have, staff has worked with finance committee to get the budget where it is at this point, and this is sort of the council, the full council's first look at high-level summary where we're at. And actually, two weeks from now, we will, we'll send out and have available a more, a much more detailed budget. It'll basically be what our final budget document looks like, and it'll have all the department descriptions and all of that. So that will be available to the council and the public two weeks from now. And then on November 4th, we will actually sit down and review that at council. And then, I think it's the November 18th that we, that we'll ask council to adopt that. There may be a few changes between what you see tonight and what you see two weeks from now. There's just some last-minute tweaks that are being made, but hopefully, what you see on the, in two weeks from now will be what you will end up adopting in November. So going back to where we started on this budget process, back in August, we project the 2022 revenues, we project the salaries, the benefits, based on the regular increases. And then we've got other regular increases from different contracts or agreements, or we have all sorts of interfund, interfund payments that happen that we end up updating. So we do that in August. Then in September, all the different departments, they make their requests for new fundings, for new funding, and then the finance committee reviewed that and approved several different requests, and we'll, I think we'll have some more detail in that with the, with the budget in two weeks from now. Tonight's mostly the overview to kind of see where the budget's at, and we are still wrapping up some of the details. Before we kind of look at, before we look at the overview, just, just a reminder of what the city budget is. The city budget is, it, it provides the legal authority that the city needs to get, to get its spending done. It's less of a document to show what we are actually going to spend, and it's more of a document that says, this is what we could spend if we got all of our projects done and all of our, all of our initiatives taken care of. Typically, in the general fund specifically, we will underspend, whatever our expense budget is, we underspend that by 3% to 5%. So we don't, we, I don't know that we ever spend, we can't spend over 100% because that's where our legal limit is. So we always come under that. On our revenues, we typically budget a little bit conservatively, and so we often beat our revenues by 3% to 5% as well. So that's where some of the, the difference in, in what our budget is and what our actual will be. If you look on, I believe it's page 74 of the council packet, just a couple items of note, when looking at the general fund, the, when you look at the total, I think it's one of the first green highlighted items, you'll see the net income is a negative 5.4 million. And this would be if we, if we spent every penny of our budget. And odds are, we, we won't. But if we did, what you're seeing is a controlled spend down of some of our healthy reserves that we have at the city. We'll get down to that, and we'll get down a little bit, into that a little bit more in just a second. But it, it is not expected to drop that much. When you look at the recurring, we break the general fund budget into recurring and non-recurring expenses. And when you look at the recurring expenses, we, we want to budget our recurring expenses so that they, so that they balance. You'll look at this number and see a negative 600,000, and you'll think that, well, this, this is out of balance. Going back to the, going back to the, the experience that we typically underspend our rev, or underspend our expenses by 3% to 5%, and we bring in 3% to 5% more on our revenues, that's actually about a million seven swing. So we will probably end up at least a million seven better than that negative number when things actually play out. So while it may look concerning, it, it is not concerning at all because it will definitely come out better than that. On the non-recurring side, you'll see net, well, you'll see 5.5 million of non-recurring expenses. These are the one-time budget requests that are, that get approved during the finance committee process. Of that, a large portion, just kind of the two biggest ones, there's a 1.1 million in there for Lincoln Park, there's a difference that has to be made up. And then there's a 2.4 million number for the remodel that's happening downstairs. So those are some of the, two of the larger pieces of that. And again, that'll be in a little bit more detail when, when the full budget document comes out in a couple weeks. When you look down a little bit further, you see a beginning fund balance of, this is where you see the 13 million going down by that 5.4 million. Again, that's if we spent every penny, every penny, and even if we did spend every penny, that 7.5 million ending fund balance is a very healthy ending fund balance. And this doesn't even include our 1.5 million rainy day fund that we have on top of that number. And so in all likelihood, when our budget plays out, if it plays out kind of like it has pretty much every other year in the past decade, we will probably end up more around 10 million instead of the 7.5. The 7.5 is, again, it's just if we happen to get every one of our projects done that we were planning to, that's where we would be.
And, and the $13 million beginning fund balance, you actually think we'll probably end up closer to 14 by the time we close out 2021?
Yeah. Again, there's a lot of conservativeness built into this budget. So this is, this would be sort of a, I don't know, not necessarily worst case, because again, this is a controlled spend down of the reserves because there are several large projects that one-time things we want to get done. So if we can get them all done, that's great because we're either enhancing our services or, or completing projects that we wanted to complete. But if we don't get those done, then our ending fund balance will look much, much better. If you have questions, kind of going through the rest of the document, if you've got questions about specific departments or funds, feel free to ask questions. I don't, I don't know that you want to go through everyone tonight. I'm happy to if you would like to. Otherwise, in a couple weeks, in two weeks from tonight, you'll get the full budget document, and it will have all these explanations in it that I could go and walk department by department through. Again, we'll, that, that document will be out in two weeks. Then November 4th, we'll review that document, and November 18th, you'll be asked to adopt it.
Yeah, and I think I'll just add a couple things. We are finishing up a few contracts. We have one with the Humane Society that we're renewing for a few dollars more than their current, current balance, just to account for inflation and those sorts of things. I see Mr. Smith's contract in here is for the same amount, and I think he generally gets a, sort of a cost of living bump on the legal side, so that'll get changed a little bit. I think Keith from, from, we got the SWAC.
SWAC.
SWAC got some money grant so that our cost to help run the disposable facility out in Old Station will be quite a bit less. We're still working on a Rivercom allocation for assessments. I'm attempting to get that lowered. I don't know how, Ruth and I are working on that, I'm not sure how well we're going to do, but I think there'll be some reduction in what Brad has in there. And there'll be a few other small, little contractual things as we sort of get towards the end of the year. I think with respect to salaries and wages, we've got all the health insurance numbers in, dental insurance, vision, all that employee benefit stuff. Our HR department, Kerry, did a full analysis of all of the non-represented salaries. So we have really two unions. We have our police union, for which we have a contract. We have our AFSCME union, for which we have a contract. And we have another 30 or so employees that are non-represented. And so every couple of years, we'll go out and we'll do our five-city comparison, and then we'll look at all of those sorts of wages for the accountants and other people that work for the city. And so we've made some adjustments to those salaries to stay up with the marketplace, and those are all incorporated in this document. And you guys approved the, the salaries, either at the last meeting in December or the first one in January, I don't remember which, but there'll be a full list of salaries by groups. So that's all been incorporated in, in this, this document as well. And again, if you have any specific questions about any specific ones, feel free to ask me, but I just want you to know those have all been sort of put into that. And then Linda asked a great question at the finance committee today about, you know, a little nervous about the $679,000, glasses on, yeah, $679,000 sort of operating loss. We had our director's meeting today, and one of the things that came up was sort of, you know, we have a number of job offerings out there right now, two engineers, a planner for Brooklyn, and others, and we can't get anybody to apply. So when, when you look at this full range of budget for salaries and benefits, and you go, well, there's two, two engineers in there that, one, we haven't hired, and two, no one's applying. So again, the chances of us spending all of our salary and wages for everyone that the finance committee's agreed to hire for new employees, we're just not going to get there. And I think it's gonna, might be interesting for some of the projects we're trying to do, and, you know, can we get engineers internally to help get these things to the finish line, things that we think are important to do? So that will be something for us to try to watch as we start leaning in the next year, just to see where that goes. Because if, if we can't hire people to do some of the things that we want to get done, then that's going to be another, another issue for us as well. So I think we continue to be a good place of work. I think our salaries are very competitive. That's why we redid our, our two-year look to make sure we're competing with those that that are around. I know Washdot right now, just the local office is trying to hire some 20 engineers, you know. They got way behind during COVID, didn't rehire anybody, and now they have all these projects to do, and they can't hire anybody. So it's a, it's, it's a bit of a mess at this point, but we'll continue to attempt to get as much of that done as possible. Anything else, Brad, from the big picture that's in here?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jail contract is still ongoing, and we're hanging in there with our numbers?
Yeah, it looks like our, our jail contract, at least at this point, looks like with our populations, it'll be just 5% more than it was last year, which, you know, one of the things you'll notice, you'll notice, I think on page 75, the Defender Court Jail Department, that's actually decreased. And that's because when we, when we built the 2021 budget, we were, we hadn't negotiated the contract with the jail yet, so we put in a slightly higher number, and the contract actually came in below that, well below that. And even with the 5% increase on it, we're still below what our 2021 original budget was. So that's why it looks like our, our court and jail costs are going down, but those aren't our costs, that's just what we had budgeted. The, the actuals will be, will be slightly different.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Brad? So you're thinking in a couple weeks, we'll get the full version?
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Or saw him plan to adopt it sometime in November?
Yeah, November 14th. We, yeah, we'll also have, we'll be adopting the property tax levy soon. I haven't seen the preliminary numbers from the county assessor yet. I think we typically receive those next week, so I'll be watching for those, and then we'll be able to.
So do you have an estimate in here for the 1% plus new construction, or you just put the 1% in there?
Yeah, I've got an estimate for the 1% plus new construction with the 4.7 million.
Good. All right, any questions for Brad at this point? Again, no action tonight, just the budget presentation?
Thanks, John.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
And department heads, it's a lot of work getting this in. And finance committee for sitting through that last time for a couple hours.
I think I say it every year, we've got great, great department directors, great staff that work diligently on this, and then the finance committee, they sit through, through long, long, boring meetings trying to pound out all the details, so it is very appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brad. All right, Mr. Kelly, sidewalk tripping hazard repair.
Aaron Kelly, Public Works Operations Manager, here tonight. Good evening. Aaron Kelly, Public Works Operations Manager, here tonight to close out this summer sidewalk hazard repair work completed by Precision Concrete Cutting. Little background, over the past few years, we have identified and made repairs to sidewalks hazards as part of the city's maintenance program. In 2018, we identified over 3,000 hazards. And in 2020, the city completed 244 repairs with a contract with Precision Concrete Cutting. In '21, our goal was to make as many repairs as possible with the available CDVG funds. We were able to make 848 of these repairs, which was great. The large number and then the size of these repairs this year increased costs, but didn't exceed the cost of the CDVG funding. But the amount has caused the contract to exceed the contract threshold. And thus, an amendment to the agreement with Precision is needed in the final voucher authorized. So that's basically what I'm asking for tonight. And the recommendation by staff is for City Council to accept the work performed by the contractor Precision Concrete Cutting for the repairs of 848 hazards, and further authorize the mayor to sign the Second Amendment to the agreement and final contract voucher. Any questions?
No, I mean, you can see them all over everywhere. I mean, you can't walk on a street that doesn't have one of those. And next year, are they coming back for more?
Yep, that's the plan. And with the current budget that we've, we've asked for, to be able to make some repairs, we'll be looking at close to the same amount for, for next year as well.
And next year, CDVG funding or regular funding because we're out of the CDVG area?
So CDVG might be an option. And I've been working with Glenn on that. But then also, we have requested some funds to be able to make some, not only more of the same work with Precision Concrete Cutting, but then some panel replacement and then some ADA ramps improvements.
Excellent. All right. Any questions for Aaron? If not, I would entertain a motion. Your Honor. Please, go ahead.
Okay. Your Honor, I move for City Council to accept the work performed by the contractor Precision Concrete Cutting for the repair of 848 tripping hazards, and further authorize the mayor to sign the Second Amendment to the agreement and final contract voucher.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Kulas, to accept the work performed by the contractor Precision Concrete Cutting for the repair of 848 tripping hazards, and further authorize the mayor to sign the Second Amendment to the agreement and the final contract voucher. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, I got three or four things. I saw Woody must have came in late, because I know he wanted to address the group, but then he left. So Woody, who's running the Numerica Performing Arts Center, I think was in the back of the room there for a while. But I think he was trying to come for the open public comment, but must have just missed it. So it was fun to be out and see Mama Mia. And the Numerica Performing Arts Center did send us a letter asking for some ARP funding. They were not as fortunate as the Town Toyota Center in terms of the amount of shuttered venue money. So they did ask for $100,000 of ARP money to get them up and going again. And so the Finance Committee approved that. So Mark and Travis, I just wanted you to know that, and Keith, that that is something that they'll be getting. So excited to see downtown sort of opening up again. And I did have a glass of wine in the winery across the street from the pack. And isn't that a beautiful place?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Very, very nice.
That's very nice, isn't it?
Very nice.
Yeah. 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 So that's Dale Foreman's family. And again, just a really great addition to, to our downtown. I would hate to tell you what I've been doing for the last number of, and we haven't met for three weeks. So I'll just go over some of the high-level stuff. Again, I don't know how much of this you guys have heard about tax increment financing, but that tool really isn't the tool we thought it was going to be, and wasn't able to help us in the way we, we originally had thought. So we still sort of, as staff, looking at that. But again, completely terribly disappointed that new construction doesn't count. And that's the real benefit of doing one of these things. So, but we're still trying to work to see if, if that's going to be something that, that we can sort of work on. And we did, Laura and I did meet with Board Chair and Vice Chair of the Chamber of Commerce, just talking about, you know, the future contract and some of that stuff. So other than that, I think we've had two police department ceremonies. So we had a, two new officers yesterday, and then we had a promotion, I think, before that. So Chief's doing a great job. He's up to 40, 43 of 45. Our last candidate that was at the academy got first in academics and second overall. So those are the kinds of people that your chief is hiring to be a new police department spokesman. So for those of you that know Miranda, who works in our accounting department, she handles all of our RMSA stuff. And we got an award for significantly improved RMSA experience. Miranda's not here, but we, she does a really good job on all of the insurance claims and handles all of that on behalf of the city. So again, she does a great, great job with that. What else? We had a condo association meeting, so we're continuing to work on issues with our condo association for the building. We were, we're getting ready to put an all-new sprinkler system on all three floors. So, well, four floors, five, how many floors we have. But so that will be going on, I think, pretty soon. This is a list that I, this is a left. But so that will be happening. That's part of our construction contract. Looking, we had our regular meeting with the county commissioners. We did have a group of people come in who are considering maybe a food cart pod, something like you might have seen in Portland or been to Oregon. So encouraging them to try to do something in our area. So they're pretty excited about that. We had a regional water meeting. So obviously, the regional water, so we set our rates for this year. They're going up a little bit to help sort of accommodate the long-term plans of getting a second source. So we're still a ways away from what that might look like. But PUD does have some money to study a ground source option where you'd pump right out of the river as opposed to digging wells. So, and I, I had RiverCom earlier this week, a board retreat. And then I had transportation this morning. So those all seem to be going fairly well. Laura, fill in the gaps?
I think you got it all.
I couldn't have got it all.
Yeah?
No. I just think it's been a very busy time. And I think, for those of you that have looked, and we confirmed with the department heads today that our last meeting this year will be December 9th. So, you know, plan on, we always try to sort of get our work done earlier in the year and give not only the staff, but the mayor, a little bit of a break. So we will plan on trying to get, the department heads seem to think that they can get everything done by the 9th. So maybe we'll plan on pizza and beer or something afterwards. But I sort of feel like, I guess Steve Smith wants this done too. He's giving like the double thumbs up back there. Are we that hard of a client?
Yeah.
Okay, we are. All right. Just making sure. Yeah. So I think that's still on, on the path, path with us to make all of that sort of happen. I really think that's probably all from me. Council members, what's going on and stuff you're doing?
Launching Tax Advisory Committee meeting jointly with Tourism Promotion Area next week.
Ted?
Trying to figure out what we're doing. And that will feed into our budget here.
Right.
At least for the LTAC. I think the TPA sets theirs, and we just.
Yep.
Incorporate it. One thing I'd like the council members to consider, the, those that will be serving after the first of the year, the Association of Washington Cities has a Legislative Priorities Committee that is a two-year assignment. And I've served on it most of my tenure on the council. And I just completed another two-year stint. Pretty soon, they're going to be recruiting for members. And so I'd like you to consider perhaps that, if you want to talk to me about what it entails. It's, it's a handful of meetings. Even before COVID, we really started going virtual. When we do meet, did meet in person, it was usually at the CTAC, either the terminal or one of the hotels there. It's not a lot of time, but it's very important. And I'd like to see Wenatchee stay there. It's just that I think that it might be time for another perspective.
Right.
From our group there. So be thinking about that. And if you're interested, again, talk to me. You can go on the AWC's website and see what the legislative priorities have been. You can guess what they're going to be.
Yep.
If you've got the latest email from them, the city survey, you can guess what they're going to be. Tax increment financing is going to be one.
Yep.
For repairing. I think the, obviously, affordable housing homelessness is another, and law enforcement issues. And then the biggest one for cities is infrastructure funding.
Yep.
That's, that's, that is our thing. So be thinking of that. And if you're interested in, and can let us know, then the mayor will write you a glowing recommendation to the president of AWC to help get you appointed.
Yep. And I do think even Ruth and I were talking earlier after Finance, you know, she's, will be going off of RiverCom and the Health District. And so we got to think about, yeah. And then Jim's been on LINK for 142 years. And then he's also been involved in RMSA.
RMSA.
At the, for AWC, which I also think is an important role for us to try to stay involved in, in some manner. So I think as we get forward, looking at those, you know, again, I think LINK is going to be something, and RiverCom, and, and, you know, I'm still doing transportation. I'm getting a little burnt out on that. But at some point, we got to start thinking about, this is already the middle of October, so our year is just about ending, and we'll be having to reappoint some folks. And so just something to think about as we, as you ponder your, what you want to get involved in, starting in 2022. Travis, anything from you?
What was this point?
Ruth?
Yep.
Jose?
Yesterday, we had the Homeless Task Force meeting, and we were just talking about the hotel leasing and rapid housing, the funding overview. So we have a new funding from the state, and both counties are eligible for, for $690,000. We're going to continue to talk about with that.
Is there a thought that they would be used to purchase something or hotel vouchers?
Yes.
Hotel vouchers? Okay.
For rent, rental payments, for services outreach, emergency shelters, and stuff like that. And there's more to talk about that too in the future.
Okay. Linda?
We did have the Wenatchee East Wenatchee Low Barrier Shelter that you were at also, and still moving forward. Final site has not been completely determined, but we're working on it.
Yeah. So we are communicating with our friends at the Salvation Army. And I think I'll be either making a trip to Seattle, or they'll be making a trip here. But we're going to try to raise it up the level a little bit, where we can get to some decision-makers here in the next little bit, because we need to start making some decisions. And so I think we're going to try to raise that level of discussion, I think, here in the next, next little bit. All right. So next week, we actually do have a work session. I know it's been a while since we've had one. I'm not exactly sure what's on the list, but.
Please, the President, just a couple of different updates.
Oh, excellent. Okay. So with all of that, and seeing no further business, we are adjourned.